Welcome to the Monday, October 14th Maplewood City Council Meeting. I generally do a little short commentary about something that's happened since our last council meeting, and I wanted to share with council members, if you remember, you approved my attendance and also Public Works Director Steve Love's attendance in Richmond, Virginia, to go to a transportation conference. Richmond, Virginia, has a BRT line, a Bus Rapid Transit line, that they call the Pulse. We are looking at Maplewood in the next few years, first with our Gold Line, and Council Member Smith is a representative on the Gold Line, and then the Rush Line going through the north side of Maplewood from actually connecting St. Paul up to White Bear. And I have to say that it was an extraordinary opportunity to go and see a BRT line and to see how they operate, and see, talk to the city representatives, talk with the mayor. We actually had lunch with the mayor of Richmond, and talked with some of the issues that they had, but I have to say that it was, there's nothing like actually seeing it and being there. Their BRT line is seven miles long, whereas our BRT line, I know the Rush Line is going to be 14 miles. Councilmember Smith, how long is the Gold Line? Do you know?
It's about 11.
11 miles, connecting St. Paul out to Woodbury, going through Maplewood. And so our lines are considerably longer, but to actually see one in operation, I was particularly interested in the level entrance into the buses, so that there's no step up, which is great in terms of people who might have challenges with steps, that it's level boarding, and so it's really convenient and very fast. The interesting fact that I recalled about the experience was that it took two years to build, and the BRT line in Richmond has only been operating for a little over a year. They had anticipated about 3,500 riders per day, and in the first year, they have averaged 7,000 a day. And if I had any kind of comments, it would be that perhaps they didn't anticipate such large ridership, because they only had two entrances into the buses. And I know in at least the Rush Line, they're talking about three entrances, to make sure that that boarding really goes very effectively and efficiently. And the other fact, during the two years of construction, and then the one-plus year that the BRT line in Richmond has been in operation, they have calculated that it has been approximately, it's brought about $900 million in development and redevelopment into that city. And you can just see it, it's alive. What was interesting, because we rode the BRT line so many times, I think we were on it maybe five or six times, going to different places and seeing how it all operated and connected the city, and I took the opportunity to talk to a number of people that were riding the BRT, and they had the same theme, and these were just, you know, regular people that were going to work, or doctor's appointments, or whatever, that the majority of people that I spoke to didn't want the BRT, they didn't like it, but they ride it now every day, and they couldn't imagine their lives without it, because they don't have to use their cars in the same way. And so it was really quite an excellent opportunity. There were representatives there from Ramsey County, and St. Paul, and Badness Heights, and White Bear, and of course Maplewood. Public Works Director Love, would you like to add anything about the conference?
Mayor and council, I think one of the things that really struck me was what access to this type of transportation brings to a city and its residents in the term of equity, access to jobs, access to good health care, access to quality food. So I think the equity piece really hit home with me.
I would agree. That was so evident, that it really was a connecting point for so many people. And I would say that all the times that we rode the bus, the times that I rode it, it was busy, which was really wonderful to see. And what was interesting was that it wasn't necessarily people going from one end to the other end. They were going to all different places in between, and they may just be very short stops, but it was a very effective way for them not to have a motor vehicle, but to have that kind of access to grocery stores, and to medical appointments, and to schools and jobs. It was really remarkable to see, and it clearly is a success story. So I just wanted to report on that. It was a great opportunity. So with that, members of the council, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Sin, would you please do the roll call for us?
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmembers Knutson?
Here.
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Neblet?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, before I make a motion to, or ask for a motion to approve the agenda, a couple of things that I wanted to suggest in terms of amending the agenda. Number 12 is the school resource contract, and I received an email from Chief Nadeau that there are some changes that need to be made, so I'd like to remove number 12 from our agenda. And I would also like to add this to our consent agenda, and I'll show you what it is. It is a traditional Mung necklace. This is a gift to the city from the Moas over at Unisom Banquet Hall and Restaurant. And they are, they're offering this to the city as a gift, and thanking the city for the, for really, I think, all of the help that the city gave to the restaurant, in terms of going through all the inspections and the whole process, they thought that they just gave rave reviews for all of the staff. And so this is a formal gift to the city, and so therefore I'd like to add this, it's a gift from the Moas of Unisom, it's actually Unisom Restaurant and Banquet Hall. And I'm suggesting that we hang it in our council chambers. It's really a beautiful piece, if anyone would like to see it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Councilmember Smith?
I think, Mayor, I'd like to add a presentation on the Gold Line.
Okay, very timely. Councilmember Neblet?
Can, I would like to add T-21, and our candidate interview suggestions.
Can you be a little more specific, candidate interview suggestions?
City Manager Coleman presented us with information that she gathered after talking to all the commissions, and I just wanted to follow up on that.
Okay. And I would like to add, we have a student from Tartan High School who is an exchange student. I'd like to ask her in just a few moments to chat with us a little bit. She is an exchange student from Pakistan. And I'd also like to add on Harambe, a new construction project going on over there, and then Nepali Kitchen. Okay, with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Juneman?
Fall cleanup.
Good one. Okay, any other additions or modifications? Okay, all those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposi, any noes?
Do we have any?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that back a minute?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? We'll get back in the swing of things here, it was a little odd.
Nodded off or something, I wasn't sure.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion for the city council workshop minutes?
Moved.
Moved by Knutson, and I heard a second from Neblet, motion to approve the Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop Minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Four in favor and one abstention. Is there a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from September 23rd?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Neblet, motion to approve the city council meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Motion passes. Appointments and presentations, council calendar update. City Manager Coleman, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The upcoming schedule for a work session is October 28th. We really don't have anything scheduled, but be happy to take ideas or issues you'd like to bring forward. On November 12th, we have the Police Advisory Commission Organization Format Review, and I put on here the Heritage Preservation Commission Staff Support Discussion. And I think what I'll do, if it's okay with you, is I'll write you a memorandum of what we're proposing, and if you have questions or concerns, you can speak with me, and if we need to, we'll bring it back. It's really kind of a, we're reducing the staff support that we have given them in the past. And then we have November 25th, the city assessment policy and a ClearGov software demonstration. We may need to reschedule that, depending on what the strategy session looks like with HEDC. So that's going to be in flux, but I will let you know about that. And some of these things we could put on the council agenda, they just might not need any action. So I'll be working through that with staff to see how we put that all together, and see if we can bring some of that forward on the 28th. I just don't know if it's ready or not yet. In addition to that, we have, Councilmember Neblet has brought up Tobacco 21, so I'd be interested in hearing how you would like us to proceed with that. When we talked about this about a month ago, I think the direction that I recall was that we were looking at raising the age of selling tobacco to 21, but we really didn't talk about flavors, and vaping, and the whole thing. And since then, there has been so much press on this, I'm not sure what direction to go, because I think that there's going to be some other levels of government getting involved here. But I'm interested in hearing how you would like to proceed with that, and maybe we can do that when Councilmember Neblet gives her her report on that, or her concerns. In addition to that, the only other thing outstanding is the pedestrian safety plan, and FYI, on Friday, we did have a schedule from Mr. Love about how we're dealing with that. We are hiring a consultant to help draft that. The consultant has worked on this in other communities, and I think we just want to be careful and make sure we're doing this properly. So we'll get that to you. I think it'll be probably the first meeting in January before you see it, but we are working on that. In addition to that, I had some updates. I think it was Councilmember Smith sent me some questions or some comments about sales tax, and what's been happening. And so Ellie and I, Ellie reached out to the League of Minnesota Cities to see what was up, and she got a copy of a bill that was adopted last year, in which I think it was one, two, three, four, five, six different cities, school district and a county included, did pass some legislation which would allow sales tax exemption for public buildings. And that, if we could, we're thinking of trying to do that ourselves, because we have the police station, or the new fire station, I'm sorry, coming up. We thought that this would be a good time to try to push some legislation for us, and it has been, as you can see from last year, it has been adopted, I mean, it went into law, so that's good. Oakdale is currently proposing the same legislation for their city this year. So I think, Councilmember Smith asked if there's anything you can do to help? Yes, you can call our legislative team, and that would be Representative Jean, and Representative Fisher, and Senator Uyghur. Might give them a call, or one of them at least.
Also Senator Kent.
Oh, yeah, Senator Kent, yes, thank you. So if you'd like to help, you can do that. I will also be reaching out to them. I think it'll be a pretty easy bill to get started, because the language is already written.
City Manager Coleman, can you make sure that you send us copies of that bill, so that we know what that looks like?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
I think that that would be very helpful, so that then we will have some talking points, so that you can contact our legislators?
Yeah.
Thank you.
In addition to, then we'll take questions if you don't mind. In addition to that, Ellie talked to Mr. Carlson at the League about the sales tax exemption for all city purchases or buildings, just make it statewide, and that has failed miserably a number of years. So the League has been pushing it, and it just hasn't, it hasn't gone anywhere. Doesn't make any sense, but that's what's happening. On Maplewood Sales Tax, we also looked into what that would be, because I know, I think Councilmember Smith talked about trying to raise some money for road improvements and other things. And what Ms. Paulsith found out is that when you apply for that, it has to have regional significance. So not sure that fixing local roads would meet that. I mean, we could maybe make the argument for some of them, but it's a little bit tougher road, because after you do that, it has to get passed by the legislature, and then you have to have a referendum. So it's a pretty big hurdle. I'm open to any ideas that you do have. I do think that it's important for us to try to get this legislation approved for Maplewood this year, or next session. According to Ms. Paulsith, it could save us about $250,000 on the fire station. So it's definitely worth the effort. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear comments that you might have about that.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I do, I do believe there's several other cities, I think Oakdale is going for some of this infrastructure improvement, if I recall from the article, that it was a broader look. I think West St. Paul also did some.
Yeah, let me, I can clarify that.
City Manager Coleman?
What it is, and I'll send this to you, you can see, but really what it does is it pertains, some of it's written that it includes sidewalks, road access, utility components, particularly the Mendota Heights, or not Mendota Heights, Menetanka, actually did fold in some road improvements, but it's not for every road. It has to be tied to that public improvement. So that's what I know about that one.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just say, you know, if it's not impossible, and with the amount of road challenges we have ahead of us, I mean, it's, we hear more about that than anything else, you know, I would hate for us to just not try. You know, I think it's worth a shot to talk to some of our legislators, to see, like, can we at least get a conversation going, and if, you know, if fails, it fails, but...
I think one thing for me that might be helpful is if we understood, what are these special regional roads?
Regional significance.
Regional significant roads. How is it that they're designating them? What are the characteristics of them, so that we could determine whether or not we have those types of roads? I think that that would be worth it, to look into that a little bit further.
I'm going to let Ms. Paulsith respond to this, but I, my recollection is, is that there aren't very many cities that have gotten this. Duluth is the one that comes to mind, and it took them two tries at it, at the legislature. So Ellie, do you know more about that?
A little bit. So this is new this year, that the legislature is requiring approval before it goes to the voters, and they need to make a finding of regional significance. I would think that the city could make, we have St. John's Hospital, we have the Maplewood Mall, we have 3M, I think the city could make their case around some of those institutions as far as regional significance.
Councilmember Smith?
So last year, Excelsior Rogers, West St. Paul, and Elk River, all won permission to adopt a half-cent sales tax, pending a referendum. Other cities, you know, Minneapolis-St. Paul, of course, have them, Bloomington has it already, but the others, and those are for road projects and parks of rec, and things like that.
Wow, okay. Thank you. We'll look up the bill. So I think there are actually two different sales tax issues. One has having to do with the exemption for new buildings, and the other one for road improvement. So I think maybe what we should do is add both of those on to our council comments.
Absolutely, yeah.
Councilmembers, do you agree?
Agree.
Okay.
And with that, we will get working on that, and also if you, we'll send, I'll send you the copies of bills, so you'll have those as talking points, and we'll be reaching out to our legislative team to get things rolling. Thank you for your input.
One last little comment about that. I'm thinking about the, you know, there's always a question about who owns the roads. It's not, just because it's a road, and I've said this many times to citizens, I always have to confer with Mr. Love to figure out, is it, if it's named County Road, then I know it's not ours. But, so Highway 61 is not ours.
Right.
So that, you know, kind of leads us, White Bear is not ours. Is Beam Avenue ours, Mr. Love?
Mayor and council, so Beam Avenue, there is some of it that is ours, and some of it's not.
I'm sorry, what?
And actually even County Road B, for example, a little portion of it is ours, and a portion is not, so. But generally speaking, the ones that are labeled County Roads are County Roads. But like McKnight and Century Avenue are not ours as well.
Okay.
It's my experience that County Roads only come to you when they need work.
Manager Coleman?
Mayor, real quick, I was just going to say, a good rule of thumb are the roads that get plowed first, those are city roads.
That is, that is a good litmus test for that, it's true. City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, I just have one more item. We received a notification, or a request, actually, from the folks at Tubman. They would like to invite the council for a tour of their facility, and if you've been on that, it's really quite interesting and amazing to see what they do in the space they have there. They're looking for, they've got some evening, early morning or evening dates, and I'd like to just give you a heads up, rather than go through that now. I'm going to put that schedule in the FYI, and then if you could let me know your preferences, then I can get back to Tubman and let them know. I think it, you would find it really nice to go see what they're doing. Great group.
Good.
That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Moving on, council presentation. Councilmember Smith, the Gold Line.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Gold Line Corridor Management Committee meeting recently, and things are moving along swimmingly. They've made their first official submission to the FTA for their next step. It was 1,100 documents, not pages, that are all part of that. Is that about right, Mr. Love? Yeah, about 1,100 documents that go in as part of that submittal. So it's a tremendous milestone for the team there. And they also have passed through, I believe, the first gate with their environmental It's the finding of no significant impact, otherwise known as, wait for it, the Fonzie. Seriously.
Really?
Yeah, it's called the Fonzie. So, so these are all big steps towards the next. So then the FTA will review this first submittal, then they have to resubmit for a second submittal. This administration's FTA has not been moving with all due speed, so I know, be still my heart, it's shocking, but, but it is going through the process. So very exciting. So far, it's looking good to be rated at a level that will make it very competitive for the federal planners.
And so I always get this question, when is it going to start? Optimistic, you know, we're going to be optimistic.
Right, so I think we're looking, was it 2024 as an open date? So I think, what's that?
That's not far.
No, no, I think 2021-ish for beginning construction, and 2024 to open.
That's good to know. Thank you very much. Councilmember Neblet?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This past, I think this past week, I think we probably all had emails or phone calls from citizens who were wondering about what the process was, or where we were at with T-21, also known as Tobacco 21. At our council meeting, I think it was a couple of months ago now, I, and maybe City Manager Coleman, maybe you can give us an update. What I recall is that we were in agreement about moving forward, about changing the age, I do believe, for purchasing tobacco or vaping sales, but we did not talk at all about flavors. So I was just wondering, where are we? I, where are we?
Go ahead, do you want to, she asked you a question specifically, and then I'll weigh in on it, too.
So I agree with your understanding of where we're going.
Okay.
It's really been sort of a, I thought we probably should talk about it again before we bring it back, because I don't think we touched on all of the vaping issue and the flavor issue at all. And so it would be, I would think, appropriate for us to talk about it again in a workshop before we bring back people again, to have a public hearing. I may be misunderstanding, but I think there's some more conversation that should be had in terms of direction for us, and possibly some more research, but I'm not sure. You guys direct that, so it, you know, we'll do whatever it is that the council wishes to do.
I was not present during that meeting, and so what I did was I did watch it online, which is a wonderful opportunity that we have. And I came up with a lot of questions, and I've kind of been doing a lot of research. Certainly, we can't escape what is happening in the news, but I think that there's a lot more information out there that, I want to make sure that the decision that we make is the best decision, that we don't have unintended consequences. And I think that, I know that I have received other emails, I have received other literature, lots of information, I've had phone calls with people about it, that things, I've asked City Clerk Sin to put together, what is the problem that we have? Because I don't want us to make a decision that is citywide, I don't want Maplewood to think that we are the state of Maplewood. There's at least a certain number of people that are suggesting that this is a statewide issue, it's also a national issue. And so what are the potential consequences? I think the one thing that I can say that we all agree on is that young people should not smoke, should not have access to tobacco. I think that that's kind of a no-brainer, that's clear. I would take it one step further, I don't think anyone should have tobacco, but I don't get to make those rules. And the question is then, what is the appropriate way to handle it? Because some of the things that are out there, I think that it's a natural slam on all 18-year-olds. I got the same email that you got, that there's a presumption that all 18-year-olds are, you know, surreptitiously going into the schools and opening up their coats and selling things to younger kids. But I don't think that that's necessarily the case, and I don't want to paint them with a broad brush. I also don't want this to be a knee-jerk emotional response, when it is going to have an impact, and I want to be able to weigh that balance, I want to make sure that we all make a, an informed decision. I have... I have been, in fact, Councilmember Neblet, we were just at the Polly Kitchen. And if you'll notice, right next door, there is a tobacco shop, okay? And the tobacco folks are saying that, because Maplewood touches on 11 different cities, that you could either buy your tobacco at the shop that's in that same shopping center or you could go right across the street to St. Paul and you can buy it over there. And I know that in my time being here on the council, we've approved, because it is legal, the sales of tobacco. And so I think we need to take a look at that a little bit more. And so I like the idea of gathering some additional information if we need to, having another public hearing about it and continuing the discussion. Because I really think that we have an opportunity to make a good decision that will encompass all of that. And there are all sorts of different, and I spoke with actually the, I'm sorry, Dr. Talid, that sent the email to everyone. I spent quite some time on the phone with him and I'm trying to read up on what other cities are doing. And I asked City Manager Coleman if we could do some research on, can we require both tobacco and liquor establishments to install those, the readers? That requires some additional staff time to look at and those are things that, Mr. Beatty hasn't heard that yet, probably. No. So there are some other things to collect and, so I agree with you, I think we need to have the dialogue. But there's more information out there. Councilmember Juneman.
Yes, I am kind of with Councilmember Neblet. We need to do something and so we need to get some homework done and move it along a little. It's fine to do all of our homework, but having been here long enough and being old enough to remember how long it took Ramsey County to do the no smoking in restaurants, I am definitely not in favor of waiting for the county or the state. You look at what the legislature accomplished last session, we'll all be dead of smoke inhalation before they do anything about this. I don't think we can wait for the state or the county. I think we need to follow some of our neighbors who have taken a stand and said, look. And if you look at the map of who's already done it, we're pretty well surrounded by communities that have done it. So pretty soon the argument about, well, they can go across the street and buy it, it's gonna be dead, for us anyway. And so I, we needed, I would like to see that, but I do know that we are basically surrounded at this point. And meanwhile, our kids are asking us over and over and over and I don't want to carry it out so far that they think we're just as ineffective as other levels of government.
I think the message that I think it sends for me is that we are studying it, we're collecting all of the information, we're looking at all of the options so that we can come up with the best decision. I don't believe that it has anything to do with delay, unnecessary delay. But, you know, as I sit up here, this is very serious business and we want to make sure that we can do the very best that we can, that we have all of the information that we have and that, I need the data to make good decisions. I believe that when I make emotional, emotions based on, or excuse me, decisions based on emotions, they generally are not my best decisions.
I just don't want us to sit on it for a long time.
Ms. Juneman, or Councilmember Juneman, I don't think that that's what we're discussing. I think we're talking about a good dialogue and debate and I think that I'd like to hear more from our community. So, Councilmember Neblet.
I understand, I appreciate that, Mayor. It just feels like when we left that public hearing the last time that we had folks here, it sounded like, which I thought was happening, that we were actually taking steps to do something. And that makes me feel like, is our word any good? Because we had a lot to say that evening.
I heard it.
And I agree, there's a lot more to learn. It just feels like we are backtracking at this point and not being, because as I recall, we were all in agreement that we needed to do something. And the something we were going to do was going to be looking at changing the age. That's, that was my understanding when we left here that night. So now to go back and say, nope, we need to have more information, more information, more information. I don't have a problem with more information. What I have a problem with is not keeping our word. And that's how it feels to me. But I agree, you know, we can have more public hearings, we can have a lot more public hearings before we make any decisions. But I don't like the feeling of committing to something and then not doing it. That's all.
I understand, thank you. You have another point you wanted to make?
I do. So back in July, City Manager Coleman gave us the information she collected on candidate interview suggestions. I think when I first, one of the first things that I suggested when I first got on the council. And it came out of the Police Advisory Commission. They were very interested in diversifying the commission. And one of the things that we talked about there was, how do we do that? So City Manager Coleman actually interviewed all of the city commissions at the time and came up with this wonderful list of 10 different things that they suggested that might be helpful in reaching out to communities of color so that more and more people felt like they would be interested and felt welcoming, felt welcomed to join commissions. And like I said, there are great ideas here, but the one thing that I've been thinking about is that we have not asked communities of color how or what it is that is holding them back from maybe applying for these commissions. And I thought, one of the wonderful, really kind of easier ways, I think, of maybe even doing that, is that Public Safety does community events all year. Would it be possible for maybe someone on the PAC to join in on those community events and actually be responsible for actually talking to different communities of color? Individuals to say, what do you think? Why wouldn't you want to join though? Or why would you want to join a commission, a city commission? And how would that, you know, how would you feel welcomed in doing that? I just, you know, we.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because you have something that you're looking at.
Yes.
What is, I'm a little confused because I remember what City Manager Coleman did was she went around to the different commissions.
Yeah.
And that was at the suggestion of the council.
Yep.
And I think it stemmed from our process. Are we, do we have any roadblocks to getting people to join? And I think Councilmember Smith, and don't, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here or if I'm incorrect, but there was a question, because our process is, we put out, you know, a request for showing interest in being on our commission. And I think there was a question whether or not people might be intimidated stepping up to the Diaz or to the microphone and then addressing the council. And that was really the charge, was, is that correct, City Manager Coleman?
That was correct. I don't remember all of the 10 things that the boards collectively recommended. But I think what Councilmember Neblet is talking about is something that we'll be addressing at our next workshop when we talk about the PAC and shifting how the PAC is organized and also the work that they do. And that would be something that I think, you're right, Public Safety could have a strong role there. So I would.
But I think you're talking about all commissions, not just the PAC.
Right.
Right. But it's information. It's just, even if the PAC is gathering the information, it's still information. So it's just a suggestion.
I think that that is a really good suggestion, that we try to figure out how to reach out and what would work better in terms of recruitment for our commissions. I think that the committee that will be, we're proposing happen with the PAC, I think they might be a good first start at that. But I think staff can also think about that with communications and just see if there's other places to put the announcements, if we can send them out to our faith community. Where are the other places where we could reach people who we normally don't reach?
That'd be cool.
Should we move the PAC up to the next workshop or are we starting at the 12th?
Question?
We have to have it on the 12th because Chief Nado and Lieutenant.
So it's in two weeks now?
It is in two weeks, yeah, thank you for that correction.
So that was, that was my only suggestion.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. I don't know that this is widespread, but I do know the environment or atmosphere or feeling right now in the country has something to do with this. Because I have a couple of neighbors who are very interested in being active and right now are afraid to come forward and have said so. And that really made my hair stand on end, but nonetheless.
It's a sad commentary.
It is. And so we need to be thinking about that when we talk to people about what this means and maybe coming up here then would be a formidable thing. So that's just another piece to be thinking about. Because these people have lived in our community for now 17 years and it's their kids they're talking about now who are in college and they're saying, well, they'll be the ones because they were born here. So I'm just, I don't know if that's got something to do with coloring it right now, but it might.
Okay. City Manager Coleman.
I just wanted a couple of points of clarification on the T-21. And what I would like to know is if you would like us to just put the ordinance that we talked about on one of the next agendas. I don't know if you want to have it be a public meeting and take testimony again. I'm not sure that that would be that valuable because we heard from both sides, I think, fairly well when we had it on the last public meeting. Or would you like to hear more about some of the research items that Mayor Abrams talked about? Or do we want to push ahead and put an ordinance on and see where that goes? I really, I need a little guidance here on what it is that you want staff to do.
I feel like I need more information. I do. I've just had so many contacts from a variety of different people and they're points of view that I haven't heard or it's new research and there's things that are changing very quickly. And I have a sense that I need more information before I can make a decision. I'm kind of the one, I have the record up here on the council, I think I want more information. And so what I would suggest, I think, City Manager Coleman, you talked about doing a workshop and then putting it on an agenda again. And we can, hopefully we can get enough information together that we have as broad a range of perspectives on this as we can because we ultimately want to make the best decision. How does that sound?
Want me to comment?
Sure. Councilmember Knutson.
Well, I think more information is important. When we discussed at our council a couple of months ago, the doctor in the audience had suggested there's a problem. He's understood from vaping. About a week later, the headline news was extensive problems with vaping. So what we're really debating here is, are we gonna weigh in on public health? Or, and the reason we wouldn't do that is because of the commercial interests of our city. So I mean, that's kind of what we're down to. It sounds crass, but that's pretty much it. The effectiveness of public health is if the state or some larger body were to agree. Just like anything, nationals usually, when a public health issue comes, is better than local. You know, if you want to weigh in on that. So I think we really need some more information, but then kind of weigh the decision around, are we trying to work with public health or, and what would we compromise for that?
Certainly. So I guess what we're talking about now is the process.
Right.
And what I've suggested is putting it on a workshop and then moving it to the agenda and having
I would agree.
a public meeting on that. Councilmember, I don't know who was first, Smith or Juneman?
Juneman was first.
Juneman.
I think so.
I didn't catch the, when the light went on.
Sorry. That I would ask for is, and I think it's fairly rapid, but in order to eliminate the argument about they can go across the street, could we please have a list of the cities around us and what they've done?
I think that's a good idea.
And who's planning? Because there's other people on our stage too.
Councilmember Smith, what did you say and what?
Oh, I say, I was just adding on to say also who's looking at it because there are some cities that are in the same place that we are that haven't passed it. You know, I think we can get some more information, I think that's fine, it can't hurt. I think it would be helpful to start having an ordinance to react to. You know, I think there are some things we can look at to try to manage. I think the way Councilmember Knutson put it, manage those commercial interests in light of public health as well. I mean, we're not gonna solve the problem, but we can have an impact on the problem. You know, but I know I've talked to some folks about, you know, do we exempt the tobacco-only shops and liquor stores who already have limitations around ages, but, you know, have it harsher in places where it's easier for kids to buy stuff? I don't know. I mean, there's different ways to approach it, but I think that at some point, to Councilmember Neblet's point, like spinning around the sort of nebulous ideas of things is one thing. I think having an, having an ordinance to react to that we can, that we can actually vote on would be, or even not vote on, but start to craft and react to would be helpful.
I would suggest that we have that after we have a workshop. Because one of the things that I have done and looked at in my research, and my concern is, is that we really have to address the problem. What we're dealing with is a $2 billion industry and the fact that anyone can get anything online. And are we really helping? I mean, I just think that there are so many, there's so much complexity to this. So I would suggest that we have a workshop, we get this additional information. Look at options, what are other cities doing in other states? What are other cities, what have they done in our state so that we've got that data? Councilmember Smith.
We also don't all have to agree.
That's true, we don't.
You know, so I mean, it might be that we may not.
That's true.
We might make a decision where we don't all agree, so, and that's okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, okay, moving on. Let's see, did you get enough, Council, or City Manager Coleman? Okay. Let's see. In terms of my presentations, I want to ask a, an exchange student, Michelle Wajid, if she would come up to the microphone, thank you very much. Michelle is a student at Tartan High School. She is here on a YES scholarship. And I hadn't, until I got the email and the request for her to attend one of our council meetings, the YES scholarship was created by Congress in October of 2002 in response to 9/11. In bringing people together, and do you want to explain a little bit more about it? And welcome to our council meeting. This is Michelle Wajid.
So hi, I'm Michelle Wajid and thank you so much for having me here. I'm an exchange student from Pakistan and I'm a YES scholarship holder. So Youth Exchange in Study was a scholarship program that was established in October 2002 in response to the 9/11 events. And it is for the countries with significant Muslim population. So it was an initiative to bridge the differences between the countries which have majority of Muslims and US after all of the 9/11 events. And I'm from YES 17th badge, so there are 17 badges that came to US so far. And another interesting thing is that Pakistan has largest US LMNI network. And Pakistan has the more number of YES students than any other Muslim country. And YES has students from more than 40 countries now. And Pakistan is having the largest number of students than any of them. And for me, how, as she asked me to quote something that how this program helped me as a person. So apart from the opportunities, of course, because US is a land of opportunities for youngsters like me and I'm 16 and I have discovered so much so far. And I feel like it's only my second month in the United States and I have done a lot, a lot of things. And I have eight more months to go and I'm expecting for, you know, many more things. So apart from the opportunity things, how US helped me is, of course, like people have a lot of stereotypes about Muslims and then about Pakistanis too. And this program helped me to, you know, overcome many of those. Help people to know what is, what actually Pakistan is and how you think it is. Also, because I had some stereotypes about the United States, so I'm here and I have all clear. Also, because I had some stereotypes about the United States, so I'm here and I have all clear. And, um, I think this is a really good start for establishing world peace, because unless you don't meet people from a certain place, or you don't go to a certain place, you will always think of, you know, whatever somebody tells you. So it's a really good step for establishing peace among countries, and, you know, people can actually see the true face of Muslims and true face of Pakistan. So YES has helped me a lot with that, too. And she, if you wanted to ask some questions, you mentioned.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for Michelle? Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. Um, this is more of a schooly question, I guess.
Yeah.
How different is it for you going to school here than in Pakistan?
Well, um, for school, I would say I've become more independent than ever. And, uh, you know, walking to the bus stop on my own, that was, that was the thing I was doing for the first time in my life, and that would be common for a US student. And, uh, you know, I, in many different ways, I have became more independent, I see, in myself. I have seen myself grooming. And for schools, of course, I can, you know, go to whatever different subjects I want to go for. We don't have much elective subjects in Pakistan, and we more, you know, we have a lot focused on sciences. But here, I'm taking all of the arts classes, because I have never got a chance to do that. So, you know, it's really helpful for me in those terms to do the things which I really want to, uh, instead of taking, you know, all of the things which I'm not interested in, but I have to. So it helped me a lot in that sense.
Thank you.
She told me that she speaks five languages. She's 16 years old, and she did say that, uh, as being part of this program and being a representative from her village, that she's been contacted by two other girls from her village who also would like to participate in this program. It's really quite remarkable. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm wondering what's been your biggest surprise since you've been here?
I don't want to be in trouble discussing that again.
Very diplomatic.
Yeah, uh, no, I really, I have quoted this earlier. I had an interview with a TV channel, a local TV channel, a few days back. So, um, it's, I would say food, because Pakistani food is way more different. So, you know, as, when I said that on my interview in TV channel, everybody is just asking me, why are you not, you know, enjoying American food and all that? So, yeah, basically, it's food, and I miss Pakistani food, too. But I, I think, I mean, like, food is not an issue, because I'm gaining a lot of experience. So my host family, like, they are really good people. They are trying to, you know, show me as many things as possible. And my host mother had taken me to a Pakistani restaurant a few days ago, and I also cooked some Pakistani food this weekend. So I somehow managed. But yes, I would say food was, um, you know, I knew that I would have this cultural shock when I would come to the United States. I mean, they tell us before we come here, we have orientations in Pakistan and then in Washington DC, too. So they let us know what kind of difficulties we are going to face, but still, you know. I, I was mentally prepared, but that was a surprise, too.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our city council meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me here, and it was really nice to meet you guys, and, um, I mean, I've never been to a city meeting before. So it was really a good experience to see how things work.
Democracy in action. Local democracy, yes, so.
So, thank you so much for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Uh, let's see, I also wanted to at least advise the council that Harambe, uh, a school in Maplewood that is part of the Roseville School District, uh, had a groundbreaking, because they are doing some new work in the building, and it really is nice to see. I know District 622 and 623 are really investing in their schools, which is absolutely wonderful to see. I was out there and put a shovel in the dirt this, last week. Uh, and also, over the weekend, Councilmember Neblet and I, uh, along with Assistant City Manager Sable, and, let's see, uh, Economic Development Director, um, Jeff Thompson? I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember who else was there. And, oh, El, I'm sorry, and Ellen Paulsweath, our Finance Director, were also there. Uh, and I got to cut the ribbon at the new Nepali Kitchen, uh, that is over in the Rice Larpenter neighborhood. They had a grocery store that they opened up, which is right next door, and then they opened up the Nepali Kitchen, and they had, um, some wonderful Nepali food. And it was wonderful to see a, a restaurant. Uh, we talked with one of the owners. Uh, Mr. Thompson and I had been there before, uh, at least, uh, with the Rice Larpenter Alliance meeting over there. And, uh, the owner, one of the owners, uh, spent 18 years in a refugee camp in Nepal. And the one thing that, uh, he talked about being in a refugee camp, uh, was that he was so bored for 18 years, and he is quite an entrepreneur now. And so we want to welcome Nepali Kitchen and encourage everyone to go and try their food. It was really quite good. Councilmember Neblet, did you want to say something about it?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um, not only was it good food, but they hosted the community. So anybody that came to the restaurant that day, um, got a free meal. Not only that, um, but in talking to the owners, one of the things that they are very committed to is giving back to the community. So they actually, if you wanted to give a donation, you could, you certainly didn't have to. Um, but that donation, then at the end of the day, was going to go to a shelter.
The food shelf.
The food shelf, just a couple of blocks away. So, um, it is, it's exciting for them to be here and to be open, and I hope everybody will support them, and, um, because the food was great.
It really was good.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, that's it for my presentations. Fall cleanup. Uh, Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. Gee, I wonder why this falls to me. Um, as you know, I think it was, uh, probably about five, six years ago, we went from having city cleanup twice a year to spring cleanup sponsored by the city. And then in the fall, our organized trash hauler, Republic, offers, um, pickup of large items at the curb for reduced prices, and it's good through the end of Nov, excuse me, October. But you do have to call ahead. You can't just set it on, on pickup day. So remember that you will get a price break in getting rid of the large things that have been sitting in your basement, and, um, you're tired of walking around them. And just call ahead, and they will tell you what the charge will be. They will pick them up, and then they bill you separately. So remember that, through the month of October.
Good reminder. Thank you for that. Okay, that concludes our council presentations. Moving on to the consent agenda. Just a reminder that we have removed item number 12, and that we have added the acceptance of the gift from Unisom Restaurant and Bankwood Hall. Any comments concerning the, or any? Councilmember Juneman, did you want to?
I think we should very briefly highlight three, four, five, and 11, because they all involve donations or grants of some kind, and I think the public should be aware.
Okay. Who is going to take, uh, council, or number three? That's the Groupa Portrait Studio. Mr. Love?
Uh, Mayor and Council, so this donation comes from David Groupa Portrait Studios. Uh, this company is used in, uh, team and program photos for the Parks and Rec Recreation Program in Leagues. And David noted that this was his way to give back to the community that he regularly works in. So this is a donation of $500 towards the Youth Scholarship Fund.
Cool. Very cool. Yes, it is. Number four, accepting a donation from Cynthia Gillette and Daniel Sadoff. Mr. Love?
Uh, Mayor and Council, yes, so Cynthia Gillette and, uh, Daniel Sadoff wished to donate, um, a bench to the Fish Creek area. Uh, Dan first became aware of the Fish Creek Preserve some years ago. Um, well, and he, uh, he kind of knew of the area partly because of his volunteer work by nearby Carver Neighborhood Preserve. And then both Dan and Cynthia say that the area is quite differently now, or different now. Um, they really enjoy the new paved walking loops. And while they note that they don't necessarily need a bench right now, they can see that coming, and they know that, uh, that's important, uh, for them. And they, they do have a spot all picked out that overlooks a stretch of the path where Great Horn Owls have been observed. So, uh, this donation is in the amount of $1,000.
Thank you.
Says people are attracted to this community by the fact that we have those things to offer.
Agreed. City Manager Coleman, you have number five.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this is a grant that we received. Uh, Mr. Sheeran applied for the grant, uh, to the Minneapolis Foundation for the 2020 census, to make sure that we get as many residents as we can involved in the complete count. And we do have a committee that's working on it this year. Uh, we do need a motion, uh, through the consent agenda to approve the Minneapolis Foundation grant in the amount of $750 for the Complete Count Committee.
And I think that's really another thing that says we are trying to be an open community and make sure that everyone counts in every way.
Stereo. Uh, G-11, Public Safety Director Nadeau?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So, uh, the city of Maplewood has participated in a grant opportunity, uh, with the state of Minnesota. It's the Toward Zero Death Grant. This is, uh, both state and federal money, which is channeled then through the Department of Public Safety in the state of Minnesota. And in Ramsey County, uh, right now, St. Paul is acting as the fiscal agent. So the contract is actually with the city of St. Paul. This is pretty important reimbursement money that we use in our community for things like DWI enforcement, seat belt enforcement, speeding enforcement, and distracted driving as well. And so typically, the way that it works is that we incur these, uh, expenses, and then we, we are reimbursed by the city of St. Paul, who, again, administers that money. I think that the award this year is about $48,000. Uh, all of that, uh, you know, used in traffic enforcement. And some of these events are actually multi-agency events, where we'll send one or two cars to St. Paul, St. Paul will send one or two cars to us. Uh, so when there's, uh, events in our city, um, sometimes there's multi-agencies that kind of combine to have more of a saturation type of, uh, event. So, uh, the state's fiscal year actually starts in October. So October 1st starts their 2020 grant period, and this would be a one-year grant.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I, I also think that just shows how staff is always reaching out and always looking for ways to do everything we do better.
Do I have a motion?
With that, I will approve, move approval of the consent agenda items one through 11 and 13.
And the addition, excuse me, friendly amendment, the addition of the?
I apologize. So that would be 14, I guess. I apologize. One through 11 and 13 and 14.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, let's see, unfinished business? City Manager Coleman?
Yes, I do have that one. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, this item is the Award of the 2020 Charitable Gambling Funds. Um, every year, you know, we, uh, receive a lot of requests, and we have, um, $30,000 to award. I would just note for, uh, the council and for the people watching, um, the council is giving a list of all the people who have applied. This year, we had 22 with seven, almost $75,000 in requests. And I would note that each of the council members independently allocate the funds. So what has happened is staff then does the calculations based on all five of your award amounts. And that is, uh, highlighted in your packet. Uh, the chart of who gets what amount is listed in the staff report. Um, I would also say that, um, we, we don't have very many people, applicants, in the audience, and that's because Lois Knutson, my assistant, has them trained to go read the packet on Thursday. So they already know. Uh, but in addition to them looking on our internet for our packet, we do send out award letters tomorrow. And they will be given in the amounts stated in your staff report. I also wanted to give you a heads up, uh, this is sort of the bad news part of my report. Uh, Ms. Paulsweath has indicated to me that the amount of charitable gambling's, uh, funds are dwindling a little bit. And so it's highly possible that next year we'll have less money to give. So in some ways, I wish some of the people were here, uh, but they'll find out about it. Um, sometimes we don't, actually, people don't collect. So we have a little bit of that, and that's part of the reason we've been able to do 30 for the last couple of years. Um, but it's very possible we'll have about $25,000 only next year. So the job will be even harder for you next time. But I do need a recommendation, and that would be, uh, approved through the approval of the, of, uh, this item. And it's under, um, I-1, it's on the packet page 135.
Councilmember Juneman?
Just a little history for the two new council members. This has been going on for a really long time, and I've been here long enough to remember when we had a lot of money. And so you could give bigger awards. So this is, it's gotten tougher and tougher, and it's only going to get tougher yet. But I also want you to know that the, the application they now fill out took quite a few years of honing before we got to, all right, what are you really going to use this for? And if we give you a partial, what will you use it for? Because we found that some people really couldn't use a piece of it. And so that's why it's that way, and I think that has helped a lot. And I, that's why I think, even if we just give some of them a fairly small portion of what they're asking for, they've thought it through, and they know that they can use, something's better than nothing. So it took a while to get to that point.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the, uh, award of the 2020 Charitable Gambling Funds.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, approval of the proposed award amounts for charitable gambling. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now we have Award of Bids. Uh, Mr. Love, this is yours.
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, so this evening, you're going to be considering the Award of Bids for the HVAC or the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning System for the 1902 Public Works Building. Um, we, we went out for bid. We hired, um, uh, LHB to help us with the design. Uh, we ended up with getting four bids. The bids were very favorable in our, um, for us. Overall, uh, the bids ranged from $180,000 to $239,000. The low bid that we're recommending is to NAC Mechanical and Electrical Services. Their base bid was $189,900. Uh, they also, um, for bid alternate one, which, um, was a different style heat exchanger that would actually save us money, uh, was, uh, a negative 9,000. So they do come in as the low bid of 18900. So if we look at the overall base bid and the bid alt plus LHB's, uh, design, uh, we're approximately $60,000 under the CIP estimated budget, so we're pretty happy with that. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the resolution for receiving bids and awarding, uh, construction contract, including base bid and accepting bid alternate number one for building 1902, the HVAC upgrade, city project 19-18, to NAC Mechanical and Electrical Services in the amount of $180,900. And with that, I'm available if there's any questions.
Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. Um, you say in this explanation, um, a more efficient, energy-efficient unit. Is there any number we can wrap our head around that might make some sense about how efficient is energy-efficient?
Um, I, I can certainly provide you with some information, but to give you the idea of, in the terms of size, we had, we currently have a 20-ton HVAC unit, and we're going down to a 17 and 1/2 ton. So there certainly is, uh, going to be some savings with that.
Thank you. Um, part of the reason for my question is an email I received from the League of Women Voters of the five cities, of which we are members. And I would like to enter it into the record, because they are, they are working on, um, energy efficiency in all of their five cities. I am emailing you so that you will hopefully consider all the ways to reduce the carbon footprint and perform good sustainability recommendations for the awarding of contract bids for the updating of the HVAC system for building 1902 that you are awarding Monday night at your city council meeting. I am president of the League of Women Voters of the Roseville area, and have been impressed with your city's work regarding the environment. We have a new environmental subcommittee in our league, and are very focused on reducing our five-member city's carbon footprint through advocating good environmental policies. It is of great importance that this work is done well and soon. Thank you for your consideration. So they're acknowledging us, and they're also encouraging us to keep moving forward. So on their behalf, I'll keep asking that question.
I move to approve the resolution for receiving bids and awarding construction contract, including base bid and accepting alternate, alternate number one for the building 1902 HVAC upgrade, city project 19-18, to NAC Mechanical and Electrical Services in the amount of the amount of $188,900.
Second. All right, I think that was a three-way tie. I heard all of it. Okay.
I think we're on board.
Motion by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Knutson.
Everybody.
I beat him out, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Love to buy stuff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And with that, councilmembers, we have concluded our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for watching and thank you for staff. We are adjourned.
I loved him.